Can I have your attention, please? Please be quiet. Thank you. I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council Meeting of 26 June 2023 to order. Mr. Hoagland, would you take the role, please?
Mr. Carter. Mr. Young, President. Mr. Walters.
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Here.
Ms. Moulton.
Here.
Mr. McDougal.
Here.
Ms. Hubig.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
I move to excuse Jeremy Carter. Remember, he was serving the country, and I think he's on his way back, so.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Hubig, to excuse Mr. Carter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) The United States of America, and to your public, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I've got a couple of, we're on to item three on our Agenda: Announcements and Committee Reports. I've got a couple of announcements, and I think everybody showed up to City Hall tonight for the inter-local agreement, public defender later on? No. Probably not, but we're happy to see a full City Hall. It's nice to have folks come out. First off, thanks to Mayor Protem Anthony for covering last week. Was in attendance of the Association Washington City Annual Conference. Mr. Walters was also in attendance. It was a good event, though I do have to admit, I was double-booked and I wasn't able to see Mr. Walters' presentation. But anyway, some good info came out there. Tomorrow, there's a council that should have received the invite, the skate park groundbreaking tomorrow. And then, a quick Oyster Run update. I know I've heard from a lot of folks about Oyster Run, and I know there are a lot of fans of Oyster Run. The city did not cancel Oyster Run. The city actually issued a permit on the 23rd of March of this year and has not pulled that permit. I know we're working with the Oyster Run Committee and with the LTAC Committee, Lodging Tax Advisory Committee, and in theory, from what I understand, and I'll let Mr. Young jump in as he chairs that committee, they've agreed to work to assist them. Still needs to review the application, as well as have a formal vote on that. Mr. Young, anything to add?
Yes, Mayor Miller, thank you. The Oyster Run has been so important to our city for many years, and part of that was, as the Oyster Run was canceled, it was a whole lot of issues, and as people began to discuss, we wanted to make sure that all of the truth of how we got here came about. And, you know, the thing that was clear by the Oyster Run was that the city had done their part, but I'm not so sure if the community was fully aware of all of those things. We just knew it wasn't going to be here. So, I assembled the LTAC Committee in short order, and I thanked them for making that happen, of course. I thanked the city staff for assisting and calling out and making sure we could get everybody together in 48 hours. And we talked about the holistic side of it, you know, the police side, the merchant side. We heard from just the issues, and quite honestly, the Oyster Run was saying that it's been around for 30-something years, and the original founders and committee were in their late 70s and early 80s, and, you know, it was getting tiresome, and they needed to try to find someone else to help in this whole process. And so, because of that, we wanted to take a look, and so we convened an emergency meeting just to sort of see where we were in all of this, hear all of the sides, to make sure we were on the same page. And we had a unanimous agreement from the LTAC Committee that we would work with the Oyster Run to bring it about. And I want to also thank Mr. Walters for convening the meeting with Angie and myself just to get to the bottom of what the truth was, what were really the impediments, and to create an environment where we might be able to work through it, or that we could help them. So, we were just really trying to be facilitating, but we wanted the community to be clear. They have been very clear that the city itself have been a great partner in this process. There are costs, you know, I mean, police, everything else costing. So, we were able to work it out. So, the good news is that the Oyster Run is back on in Anacortes, and we were able to work it out. So, you know, just, it took the effort, honestly, of the entire city, the LTAC Committee, and also staff, just to sort through all of the stories and come to the core of what truly was the issue, and we realized that we could work through it, and that's what we did. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And just to remind the members of the public, we do not do clapping in City Hall, so just keep that in mind. And the idea is to make sure that everybody has their opportunity to give their opinion, whether you agree with it or not. Okay, we are on to our next announcement, 3A. So, we will not be having a council meeting on the 3rd of July. This is a great opportunity for staff, friends, neighbors, to celebrate the 4th of July events because it falls on the, holiday falls on Tuesday. And with that, some information about that day. Again, July 4th is Tuesday. 10:00 AM, we'll be gathering at Fifth and Commercial for Town Photo and Patriotic Program. 11:00 AM, the 4th of July Parade along Commercial from Third to 10th Street. Again, parade participants, please line up, starting at Third and Commercial, and then along O Avenue prior to the parade. And then, 5:00 to 10:00 PM, Rock the Dock at Seafarers Memorial Park in coordination with the port. And fireworks will begin typically after 10:00, which is dusk. And again, we have a great fireworks show, but the fireworks show is a great fireworks show, thanks to a lot of donations from many of you. Donations for the fireworks show can be made through the Anacortes Parks Foundation, anacortesparkson foundation.org. All right, we're on to Committee Reports, Personnel Committee. Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Thank you. We had a Personnel Committee last Friday, and included Director Nguyen, Finance Director Hoagland, and then Mr. Young, Ms. Moulton, and myself. And we have heard some challenges with HR. We've actually only got two full-time positions, covering a director and then a, what was a specialist has now been upgraded to a generalist, and a request for an additional position for a specialist, which is the kind of the entry level for 2024. And so, because of some staffing things, there's a potential that we are going to, we are going to need a temporary position, or a temporary person to be hired for three months of 2023. And so, as a committee, we wanted to kind of do a deep dive. The proposal had already been prepared by the Director Nguyen, who's head of HR and the Personnel Director, and we just wanted to have a better understanding of how to most effectively staff that department and make sure that we are being prudent with funds and what is actually needed to continue the well-running of the city, because, you know, personnel and HR is one of those that doesn't necessarily bring in revenue, but it is the department that supports all of the other departments to make sure things are run smoothly, things are, personnel is handled correctly, and really kind of protects the city from liability in the future. And also just recruits good quality folks to live and work here and continue to have their careers here. So, we had a really good presentation. I was pleased, it probably was the best presentation I have seen a department head present for justification and research and comparables. So, I think we'll continue to talk about that somewhat, but it was a good meeting.
Thank you. All right, next up is Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee.
Mayor Miller.
Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Our Hacks Committee meeting was last Wednesday at 9:00 AM. We had switched from Thursday a couple of weeks ago, so it's, Wednesday's at 9:00 now, and those meetings are open to the public via Zoom, so people are welcome to join at any time. We do have a lot of guests and providers, both from Skagit County and from Watcom County, and one of those people came to visit us last week from Watcom County. Her name was Adrian Solenberger. She works for the Opportunity Council as their Housing Development and Operations Manager, and she was the person who was brought in to help turn around the project known as 22 North, which was permanent supportive housing for both youth and older adults that really ran into some troubles during COVID, and a lot of stuff went on there that was unexpected. And so, she's been instrumental in turning that project around and getting it more to where it needs to be, serving the people it needs to be, and also being a good neighbor to the surrounding businesses and residences. So, it was really interesting to hear from her, and it's part of our ongoing learning about what people need and how to provide it, and how tricky that can be and is. We also have, we had Sandy York from Community Action there, and they have been going to move into the Olson Building, but the construction there has been delayed, so the Anacortes Family Center has kindly given them space in the, in the family center, but now that's getting crowded too with the addition of new staff there. So, Community Action is looking for space, hopefully near the hospital, which would be a good location ideally, so we're on the lookout for that. And there are some conversations happening there, so we hope to have good news on that soon. Thank you.
Thanks. Next up is Planning Committee Report.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters.
The Council Planning Committee met right before this meeting. We talked, I think, basically about three topics. First of all is signage. We had identified some areas in the sign code that we may want to update for clarity or changes in the regulations. Those areas include the upper limit on the size of political signs, the brightness of commercial signs, movement interval of commercial signs, especially the newer style, especially on Commercial Avenue, limitations on the number of signs associated with grand openings, and how many times you can have a grand opening during the year. And then, potentially limitations around the tall sail feather signs where they block the sidewalk. We are not necessarily proposing any one of those, or all of them, to move forward at this point, but we've got those things out on the table, so we can talk about them more and delve into the text of the existing code right now. Second topic was permit processing. There was a lot of emphasis on expediting permit processing in the last legislative session, and we talked specifically here about the virtues of potentially changing the Type 5 permit process from public hearing and recommendation before the Planning Commission to public hearing and recommendation by the hearing examiner with decision by the City Council. We'll continue to explore the virtues or drawbacks of that and make some recommendation in the future. And then, finally, we talked about housing, the housing bills, and specifically ADUs. New state legislation will require us to relax the rules on accessory dwelling units in town, and the objective there is to get more long-term housing. The new state law seems to allow condominiumization of ADUs, which we're not very comfortable with when the construction method differences between attached ADUs aren't consistent with typical multifamily construction with firewalls between units and those kinds of things. So, we'll be exploring that more, we'll look for some more clarity in the legislation and have more discussion in the future. No, again, no recommendation or action items from that item at this, at that particular meeting.
Any other Committee announcements or Committee reports? All right, we are going to move on to item number four, which is Public Comment, and this is your opportunity to address the council on anything that is not on our agenda. So, I think I've got quite a few folks signed up to speak, 27 if I counted correctly, and most say on Resolution 322, but I do have somebody who wrote Oyster Run, so that is not on our agenda. If you want to come up and, Ms. Gardner, oh, okay, Pat Gardner. And again, so come on up in three minutes and state your name and where you live, and we'd just like to know the city.
There. There we go. Mayor, council members, thank you very much. I'm Pat Gardner, Anacortes. I'm here regarding the Oyster Run. Thank you. And thank you, Ryan, for the emails, keeping us a bridge to what was going on and connecting with those that were concerned on the internet. I do appreciate that. And all those other people behind the scenes to keep the event going on, because it is so much fun. And again, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else commenting on anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, that answers that question. So, we're going to move on to our Consent Agenda, item five, items five, A, B, C, and D, council.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
Unless there's any objection from other council members, I move we approve the Consent Agenda item A, B, C, and D.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Ms. Hubig, to approve Consent Agenda items A through D. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. We are on to Other Business, item 6A, which is Ordinance 4054, AMC Chapter 10.12 Parking Code Update. This is a discussion item. I know we've gone through a few versions, and I'm stretching out the time to give Mr. Walters time to pull up his presentation, and he's already got it, and I'll give him some time to get back. So, again, discussion item, generally our first read. I know we've gone through some parking items before, and I don't have anybody signed up to address council on this item. Anybody raise their hand if they're going to address on this item? Okay, great. All right, Mr. Walters.
Thank you. So, we have prepared a presentation and a new draft ordinance that would completely repair and replace the Parking Code Chapter in our municipal code. So, first of all, a couple of points of review. We had identified a number of problems with our Parking Code Chapter. First of all, it has become quite disorganized over time, but it also lacks some important features. For example, it's difficult to insert new provisions into the existing chapter. We've had quite a bit of discussion about requirement, potentially requiring moving of vehicles for street sweeping to support our stormwater program. If you wanted to insert that in the existing chapter, certainly you could, but it would not be elegant. The chapter lacks references to the state statutory definitions, which are important to incorporate by reference so that we're all functioning the same way as other municipalities. It lacked prohibitions on parking in bike lanes, construction areas in front of mailboxes. It, we have around town some specific no-parking areas that had been signed or striped, but not listed in the code. So, those are listed in the code provisions in your packet in track changes, so that you can see where those have been added. City park, parking lots, parking lots associated with a city park or with the ACFL were not regulated, and so it was difficult to ticket people who were parking incorrectly in those lots. And then, we didn't really have any significant amount of code language regarding towing, including impounds without notice, which was something the Police Department was particularly interested in, and any regulations governing towing vehicles used as a residence. So, briefly, the process, the Planning Committee and the Housing Affordability and Community Services Committee originally raised these issues related to its work. Our committee membership is the same, that's why we have the both listed here. In 2022, we proposed a revision to the code to create an oversized parking limitation, but we suspended that as part of all of the other pieces that we were working on at that time, and because it needed a little bit more work. Then, the City Council revised the Parking Code this January to remove the misdemeanor penalty. Again, because of the age of the Parking Code Chapter, we had language in there that made it a crime to park incorrectly, and we took that language out. So, now we have a completely rewritten and reorganized chapter. We sent it out for staff review. They provided comments, notably Public Works and APD, and then I worked with the city attorney on refinements. So, first of all, here's what we're trying to do here. Completely reorganize the chapter to make it more easy to update and easy to read. Harmonize the chapter's definitions with the statutory definitions. Convert lists to tables, which makes it easier to update and definitely easier to read, and then standardize and update language. In the existing code, the chapter is divided into five articles, and articles aren't standard divisions in our code, but when chapters get lengthy, they're available. So, Article One is titled General Provisions, but it contains very specific provisions. Article Two is titled Parking Regulations, which is sort of the point of the whole chapter. Article Three is Traffic Regulation Near the Gwemus Ferry Dock. Article Four is Parking Along Parade Routes or Street Fair Areas, and then Article Five has Residential Parking Zones in it. Article Six, Article Six is Marine Waterways, and the proposed ordinance would just recodify that someplace else, because it doesn't have anything to do with parking traditionally-thought-of-vehicle. So, the proposed revision to the Table of Contents is to take that green article and split it out into its constituent colors of yellow and blue. General provisions would actually be general provisions. Article Two would be the very general parking regs, which are sort of analogous to the Article Two in the existing code. And then, Article Three would be the parking limitations that currently also exist in Article One. And the code proposal is documented with the blue highlights that indicate which sections came from which sections in the existing code. Article Four would be residential parking areas, covering basically the same topic. And then, Article Five would be old Article Four expanded to cover construction and more special events than just parade routes. Article Six would be a wholly new chapter, or article, covering towing and impoundment procedures. A couple of important definitions that you'll find throughout the code. One, vehicle is defined in the statute, and it includes everything. Street block means the section of a street that lies between two other streets that cross the street roughly perpendicularly. That's a new term, and it's not found in the RCW, but we use it in the code for a couple of purposes. And then, street segment means a portion of a street bounded by two points. If you look in the existing code, there are lots of provisions that say on Commercial Avenue between Fourth Street and Eighth Street, you can only park on the south side of the street on Tuesday when crow flies overhead. And in the new code, they are listed in a table, and the words, and the term "street segment" is utilized to refer to the portion of the street that's listed in the table. You've got the whole document, but here are a couple of highlights. The 72-hour parking rule that is existing in our current code is now limited by street block. So, the proposal here is to say if you have parked for a continuous period of 72 hours within a block, and you've moved from space to space within the block, that's still continuous. However, if you move off of the block and go someplace else, for instance, maybe you come to work and you park in the same block every day downtown, then you're not limited by the 72-hour parking rule, because you've moved during the 72-hour period. City parking lots, or city parks and ACFL parking lots, Washington Park trailer parking, Washington Park campground parking, and the Loop Road are now addressed in the code, and the citation is there. So, if you, if you park beyond your reserved campground time in the campground, we'll be able to tow you, or ticket you first. If you park on the Loop Road in a spot that's not designated for parking, we can ticket you. Notably, and nobody asked for this, but I put it in here, I proposed it to be a Class 1 civil infraction if you drive a vehicle over 20 feet on the Loop Road. There is a sign that says, "Don't do that." It's in the park policies that are adopted by City Council, and yet, it keeps happening. And it means nobody else can get through there, trailers, RVs that can't make the tight turns, it becomes a big problem. The Residential Parking Permit Section is essentially the same, but it limits the number of parking permits to four per household plus five guests, five guesses, existing code. The new code would allow immediate towing for some violations, and I'll go over those, and then it would delete the street parking permit process for RVs, boats, or other vehicles. So, in the existing code, there is a process, which I understand was never really used, for someone to apply for a permit to live in their boat parked on the street. So, we've deleted that in this draft. It also creates a new section concerning oversized vehicles, and this is similar to what we talked about last fall. The proposed language is in that citation, AMC 1012340, so you can find it in the document. It applies to vehicles over eight feet in width, seven and a half feet in height, or 20 feet in length. So, any of those criteria would trigger the application of this section. And that definition is based on definitions in other codes for oversized vehicles. It limits to eight hours of parking, any one of those oversized vehicles, in residential areas and in the CM zone, the Commercial Marine Zone, which surrounds the Port RV Park. There are some exemptions from this limitation, and those exemptions are from this eight-hour oversized vehicle rule. They are not exemptions from the 72-hour rule, or other rules requiring you to park parallel parking or diagonal parking. So, those exemptions include a vehicle parked with permission of the adjacent property owner, or a vehicle that is associated with delivery or machinery equipment for adjacent construction. So, those could be parked in excess of eight hours, but then they would still run up against the 72-hour limit, or in some cases, there are shorter limits in some zones. Towing. Generally, under the code and under the state law, 24-hour notice is required before towing. The proposal would allow immediate impoundment of specific vehicles in violations of the Parking Code, and that citation provides you the complete list, but here are some of the highlights. A vehicle that is impeding traffic, a vehicle in an alley, a fire lane, a bike lane, a construction zone, a parade zone, a vehicle in a city park, ACFL parking lot after hours, a junk vehicle, and that has a definition in the state law, a vehicle creating an illicit discharge. This is a new provision, but a vehicle that would, that is contributing any kind of non-stormwater water to the stormwater system would be eligible for immediate towing. And we've talked about that one at length, because we have had some situations where that has occurred, and it creates potentially millions of dollars of liability, just straight costs potentially for the city. Now, we also have a section on towing a vehicle used as a residence, and there are substantial limitations around how vehicles can be towed if they are used as a residence because of some recent case law, specifically Seattle v. Long. And that case law and that decision is based on the Homestead provisions of Washington State Law and the Washington State Constitution. So, what we've proposed in this section is that a police officer must make a determination as to whether a vehicle is used as a residence before towing any vehicle. So, anytime they tow a vehicle, they've got to make a call as to whether the vehicle is used as a residence. And then, a vehicle used as a residence may be towed, like any other vehicle, if, which is allowed under the case law and is allowed under our code, if it's in violation of those specific sections, then it can be towed immediately. If it's in violation of just our general provisions, then it can be towed after proper notice. When the vehicle is not being used by the registered owner, then the Homestead Act provisions don't apply. So, all ordinary provisions related to impound, redemption, and disposal apply. When the vehicle is being used by the registered owner, the city must adjust the impound fees based on the owner's ability to pay. The city may not dispose of the vehicle without a court order. And then, finally, we have some penalties in the, in the code. And under the existing code, penalties are sometimes unclear. Generally, there's a Class 2 civil infraction as a penalty, but there are some exceptions. And this is what we did earlier this year when we converted it from a criminal offense. Penalties not listed are regulated by court rule, and so, for example, for a parking infraction that's not specifically called out by the code, there's a $20 penalty under the court rule schedule. In the proposal, new penalties are listed in each section, and they're all civil infractions. The statute sets a Class 1 civil infraction at $250, and then, as you go down the list, a Class 4 civil infraction is $25. Now, that's not 100% the whole story, because there are court fees and other assessments tacked onto that, but that's the penalty. So, some provisions in the, in the code chapter are listed as a Class 4 civil infraction. Some are Class 3. Driving a vehicle over 20 feet around the Loop Road is a Class 1. Driving a vehicle over 20 feet around the Loop Road is a Class I. So my sense is that council will want to take, you know, a deep dive into this, and hopefully, this overview is helpful. But this is only a first read, because it's such a departure from what we've looked at before, and because we use the ordinance number already from when we looked at oversized vehicles before, to do the ordinance that removed the misdemeanor penalty. But that's the conclusion of my overview, so if you have any questions, I could entertain them, or we could just jump into discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Walters, and I do appreciate the work. So I know Chief Floyd, if you want to start making your way up to the podium, because always the concern for any of this, there's a lot of stuff in here, so obviously, council, you'll want to take a good look at the information that's in here. And version control is always a challenge. We still find things in Title IX that we wish we caught before, tying certain infractions to certain code language. So I think if there aren't any immediate questions for Mr. Walters, I'll let Chief Floyd, if you want to, again, we're looking for unintended consequences and where things don't line up, but particularly from the Police Department, it was really important to have the folks that have to execute this code weigh in on it. And also, probably a good time to, I'm pretty sure most of council knows, we've finally hired our halftime parking, additional halftime parking enforcement, so we'll be able to work on these when we get this finalized. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of the council, and members of the audience in attendance tonight. I'm excited that there's this many people that are interested in the parking code to show up for this evening's event. So I appreciate your attendance. I appreciate the work that Mr. Walters put into this. After 23 years of working with a rather disorganized code, to be able to go through and make sure all the things that we had asked for are in here following an organized, easily laid-out code was a little bit foreign, so I've read through this multiple times now, just to make sure that some of those things don't get missed. I did, I would like to point out that in 1012340, Section C1, Mr. Walters just mentioned the vehicle being able to be parked adjacent to real property with the property owner's My concern for that is having to track down who gave that permission, whereas if it's a vehicle that's owned by the property owner that's parked adjacent to, that's pretty easy for us to draw that conclusion and know that that is parked with permission. If it's somebody other than the person that owns that property, then it's incumbent upon the parking enforcement person to make contact with the property owner, find out if they gave permission, and I think it creates some inefficiencies there. But overall, the things that were the greatest concern I found in here as I've gone through it multiple times, I would also like to point out that in conversations with the Parks Department, we appreciate that this establishes some uniformity in the hours for the parks, because there was a few of our parks that had hours opening at 5:00 a.m., some of them opening at 6:00 a.m., and this would standardize that. So that is what we want to do, is to make it more user-friendly for our residents to be able to comply with the city statutes. In respect to offenses within Washington Park, this is much needed, because for many years, we've tried to make a RCW that wasn't truly created for that purpose fit our needs at Washington Park. So this is much needed. In conversations with Director Lunsford and the Parks Department, the Parks opinion is, by the time they get to the point where they have called us for assistance in dealing with these problem vehicles, they've given numerous warnings and talked with the individuals that are responsible. And the Class IV civil infraction seems a bit low for the amount of leeway that they've been given up to that point. But if it's council's choice to retain that, then we can certainly use that going forward. Our proposal also was for a warning on the first offense for individuals parked in the boat trailer parking area without having paid the day-use fee. We do get some individuals from out of town that may be unfamiliar with the process, and we generally have good levels of compliance when we talk with those individuals and explain to them. Our biggest interest was for the chronic offender that has had multiple warnings, we'd like to be able to move straight to the Class III civil infraction for those individuals. And then, again, I appreciate the addition of the stormwater provision that has been a reoccurring problem the last few months, so, and that is much needed as we work to protect the waters of the Salas Sea that surround our community. Just wanted to ask for some clarification on 1012650A3. So, order authorizing such disposal by a court of competent jurisdiction, would that be the standard junk vehicle process that we utilize currently, or is that different? I didn't have a chance to look up the reference prior to being called up to the podium.
Again, we can just kind of take that for action to figure that out, but it's important to make sure we lay out some of the concerns right now. So when council's going through this, hopefully, it'll be fresh in.
With that, I think these changes are well-thought and much needed, so I appreciate council's consideration.
All right. So before I turn it over to council, I, so one person wanted to comment on the parking ordinance, so please come on up and.
Mary Jo McCartl, Anna Cortis. And I just have some general comments, and they're more just for clarification, and maybe I don't want to take up the time, I can talk to Ryan or the council, just about missing pieces or inconsistency in information provided regarding infractions during, in the different sections. But I do have a question about, that hasn't been raised in this document, and that is cars that are parked on the sidewalk. And there, with the haphazard hit-and-miss sidewalks that we have, and also with the accidents that have been occurring on M Avenue between Oaks and the hospital, a lot of people are starting to park on the, in the resident, in the right-of-way landscape buffer between the sidewalk and the street. And that sidewalk is often close enough that the width of the vehicle is encompassing part of the sidewalk, so that's a concern. The other one is that in this document, you haven't addressed the impact of traffic on 41st Street at the Fidalgo or Mount, Fidalgo Elementary. The folks that are lining up to pick up their kids are parking on the street, and traffic going eastbound has no choice but to go into the opposite traffic lane. And I think that's a critical subject that needs to be addressed, because we have kids that are running out of school, cars parked on both sides of the street with parents trying to pick them up, traffic frustrated getting through that section, and it's just something that's a safety issue, that whether this document is the appropriate avenue to address that, but it is something that should be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'd encourage members of the public, this document's available online, and go through there and look up your street and see if you got it. We've received a couple of comments from members of the public via email as well, so we'll work on getting this as best as possible. All right, council, comments, questions? Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walters, for doing all this work and making it so organized. I will send notes. I just, for a couple of things that I lack clarity on, and some things that, just a couple of things I wanted to ask you about, so I'll do that offline.
All right.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Walters?
So I would encourage council members to page through the document and look at the varying levels of civil infraction that are associated with each violation. Make sure that they're consistent with, especially relative to each other, what we want in terms of civil violations and the fees that are associated with it. Maybe Ms. Wetnam could send us actually a description of, or Chief Floyd, the total cost of, say, a Class IV, Class III civil infraction. One thing that APD had commented is that enforcement is easier if all of the civil infractions are the same. However, not all the violations are necessarily the same, so I, where I listed them here, I didn't list them all as the same level of violation. I personally feel that if you fail to back in angle park correctly, that is much less worse than some of the other things that are in the chapter. So I would especially look for that for the next time that we talk about it. And Chief, in response to your question on Washington Park offenses, I didn't include a warning, because I figure you're probably going to give warnings anyway, but your point is well-taken about, maybe it should be a Class III to begin with. So I'm certainly open to those types of adjustments. And the other section that you pointed out, where it's potentially difficult to determine if an adjoining property owner has given permission, that was similarly an issue in the 72-hour parking provision, and we tweaked that consistent with Zabrina's comments. So we might do that here as well, to make those sections harmonious.
Mayor Miller?
Mr. Young. Thank you. You know, I like Councilwoman Moulton, and just have a couple of little tweaks that, for clarity, that I'll forward on to Mr. Walters and, of course, you know, work out those pieces. I just didn't think it was necessary to sort of regurgitate all of that right now here, since this is the first read, but, you know, it was a tremendous amount of work that went into this, and it's always the team effort is what makes it work for all of us. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right, apparently, everyone's already all excited about to get to Item 6B, which is Resolution 3122, recognizing the month of July as America Proud Month in the city of Anna Cortis. This is a discussion and action item, and I will go ahead and make a couple of background comments, because my name is associated as the staff contact. So just, I was asked very persistently, I might add, by a number of members of the community many times, to do a proclamation for America Proud. And I may have stated many times before, as a general rule, I don't do proclamations. A little Government 101 here, proclamations are typically made by the mayor, resolutions are council's purview. I plan to continue my tradition of being judicious with mayor proclamations, using the guide that I'll use, whether it's something specific related to an action as part of my job, where it impacts all citizens in a positive way, generally benign, ceremonial, occasionally honoring a prominent Anna Cortis citizen. So I did follow the precedent and kick this one to council as a resolution. Admittedly, I had Mr. Hoagland put it on the agenda with some hasty minor edits by me just before leaving for the AWC conference. I did read it. I found nothing in the wording or ideals bothersome. In fact, the opposite, in my own opinion, as a retired naval officer and military dad that has been fortunate to travel around the world many times, as a, and a member of a number of patriotic organizations myself, including local VFW and American Legion, I found the words a good reminder for our unique constitutional republic. I've read through at least, or I read through it, and at least I thought we could agree that we're all Americans, and on council, we all took oath to the Constitution. I did not go to any website or ask any of the supporters of this resolution which national candidates to support or not support, or even the intent. This is not associated with any national movement except patriotism, which I guess is a national movement. I just read the words, and they read to me as straightforward. I like America, I like Constitution, and I'm glad we're not ruled by a king, so let's celebrate. I don't spend too much time on social media or try to figure out the latest political schisms that seems to generate. The city does have the lead on 4th of July celebrations. We have a photo, parade, fireworks, et cetera. I'm proud to celebrate that with my fellow citizens on this annual occasion. I have no intentions of forcing support of all Anna Cortis citizens for any political organization or with any political motives, and recognize we all have political biases, but we all share a commonality of citizenship and the privileges that come with, come with it, including the right to free speech. The city will celebrate Independence Day next week, and therefore, I'll ask the council to consider the words and why we celebrate on the 4th of July. So with that, I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then open it up for some public comment. And again, I'll restate some of the rules on public comment. And if you could, maybe Mr. Hoagland could clear the screen, so we have the countdown timer, because I know that's going to, that's going to come up. So, "Whereas the city of Anna Cortis recognizes our great American history built on liberty, freedom for all, whereas the city desires to proclaim and honor groups and civic organizations for their support and dedication to what America Proud Month represents, whereas our thanks and support go to our local police department, fire department, active-duty military, and veterans, VFW, Young McCool Post 12220, the Anna Cortis Else, Anna Cortis American Legion Post 13, Eagles Club, and many volunteer groups who continue support efforts to recognize America Proud Month, whereas we hereby proclaim and support the events that recognize and demonstrate our support for celebrating America Proud Month, such as the annual 4th of July Parade, 4th of July Citizens Group Photo, annual 4th of July fireworks display, and ceremony at Cosm Park to honor veterans and active-duty military and their families who protected our freedom, and whereas the United States of America is the longest-running constitutional republic in the modern world history. And whereas the United States of America still operates under the U.S. Constitution adopted in 1787, with the Bill of Rights adopted in 1791 and subsequent amendments, this created our unique brand of American freedom that does not exist anywhere else in the world and must be celebrated and remembered." So that's the resolution, and I will soon turn this over. So at this point, I will turn it over for public comment. Thank you. And please limit any of your remarks to three minutes. I will remind everyone that the mayor may limit comments to those who have signed up in advance of this meeting. Like I said, I've got 27 signed up. And may limit the time allotted for each speaker to facilitate orderly progress of the meeting. The rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing or meeting to give every person who wishes to speak an opportunity to be heard and to ensure no individual is embarrassed by exercising his or her right to free speech. Again, not a lot of people like public speaking, so that's why we ask you to refrain from clapping, cat calls, cheering, if you like what folks say. So it's just an opportunity for council to hear what you want to say. Also, being respectful of others' time, if you, if you want to get your name on the record, of course, you can come up and state your name. But again, if you agree with the comments and just want to state for or against, then that will help move this along. And again, that's being respectful of your, your all's time as well. So with that, I will call the first, I'll start calling off the list, Leanna McCord. And you come up in. And you have three minutes.
Okay. My name is Leanna McCord, and I live in Anna Cortis. Good evening, Mayor Miller, members of the city council, and the audience. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight about this important issue. First of all, this issue, the resolution is to say thank you to all the selfless Americans, including our Anna Cortis community. including our Anacortes community, who have made and are making the tremendous sacrifices so the rest of us can enjoy prosperity, peace, stability, and security. The purpose of this resolution is to remind all Americans what unites us as Americans, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Those words of the Pledge of Allegiance are not meaningless, especially in view of the clear signs that a second wave of the devastating financial crisis of 2008 is on our horizon. None of us would be immune from such a second, much larger, and much more dangerous wave of financial instability and uncertainty. To survive our next major crisis, all Americans must be able to unite quickly. This is the only way to make the necessary changes and sacrifices fast enough to save our local, state, and national economies and remain free, prosperous, stable, and secure in such a tumultuous time. Distrust and division, left to fester long enough, can topple any city, any state, or any country, including a country that has been as successful as the United States, the longest enduring constitutional republic in world history. This resolution is to remind us now that before the next crisis, our common shared American history is what gave us the ability to survive and thrive together in our last major crisis of survival, World War II. As Dwight Eisenhower, the Supreme Allied Commander during World War II, who saved our freedom from dictatorship and later became President of the United States, said, "There is nothing wrong with America that the faith, love, of freedom, intelligence, and energy of her citizens cannot cure." Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Pam McGun. Sorry, I apologize in advance if I, I'm either mispronouncing the name because I can't quite read it, or I'm just an idiot, so, sorry.
I'm Pam McGun of Anacortes, and I'm here because I believe that we need to educate our children. My father served in World War II. He fought the Nazis. And today, sadly, we have children who don't even know what the Holocaust is. We can't allow that to happen. I had grandfathers that served in the Civil War to preserve the Union and to abolish slavery, and I am so proud of them. I had grandfathers that served in the Revolutionary War to free us from the tyranny of King George. I am proud of those who actively serve today, our veterans. I'm proud of this city council who sacrifice and give their time for us. I'm proud of our law enforcement here in town, who despite the way things are, they've been able to maintain their sense of humor, which is very pleasant. There is just every reason why we need to continue this and to educate at every opportunity we can so that others will know why we are proud to be Americans. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Next up is William Gallagher.
I thank the council for this opportunity to speak. I hadn't heard the full language of the resolution until recently. My name is Patrick Gallagher. My wife and I live at 4938 Portales Way in Anacortes. So all I have seen is the title, which is make America, or to call the month Proud America Month. To me, that doesn't sound like a good description of what your resolution is intending to accomplish. To me, it sounds like a political slogan, and the only politically active groups I've been able to attach it to by looking on the web are people like Fox News, people who are anti-vaxers, conspiracy theorists. So it seems to me it's an inappropriate title. I think it may cause a pain to some members of our community, and I ask you do not pass the resolution in its present form. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Marie Gallagher next.
Marie Gallagher, Anacortes, Washington. Thank you for letting me speak. I don't think there's anybody here that isn't proud to be an American. I'm proud to be an American. What I'm afraid of is this kind of a resolution says something else to me. You weren't able to pass the Pride Resolution, but you want to pass this. Everybody supports July 4th, our celebrations, that sort of thing. I think this should not be passed. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Next up, Dick Bowen, I believe.
Hi, I'm Dick Bowen, and I want, first of all, I want to say that I served as a city council member on Bainbridge Island. I know how much time you folks put in. I want to thank you personally for your time and effort as city council members, and I also want to thank you for making Anacortes such a wonderful place to live. What my wife and I enjoy about Anacortes is its cultural diversity and the opportunity that we have to speak what's on our mind. We have freedom of speech. It's just a wonderful place to live. I was a little perplexed that somehow this resolution kind of seems to have turned into a political football, and it was my impression that the purpose of the resolution was to show respect for our founding fathers who sacrificed, in some cases, everything to build this country, to get it started. And I also feel that the thousands of American men and women who have sacrificed their lives for us, I thought that's what this resolution was all about, that it was not a political resolution. It was just a resolution of saying, we're going to take the month of July, and we're going to highlight what this country means. I think we're at a time when we've gotten so diverse that we talk about white supremacy, we talk about the, what is it, the Proud Boys, whoever the hell they are, we talk about Antifa, and there's only one race in America, and that's Americans. And that's what has made this country strong in terms of bringing people from different cultures interacting. I love black Americans, I love Asians, I love Hispanics, I love them all because they're making our country what it is today, and I thought that's what this resolution was about. I do agree with Mr. Gallagher that the title sounds a little flaky to me, but in terms of the resolution itself, I think it's nothing wrong with taking a month and saying, this is the month of July to honor what this country is all about. So I would urge you to do whatever tweaks you want on the resolution. I think it's totally appropriate that we set aside a month that would bring us all in focus on why are we here? And first, you know, I'm white. I really resent that somehow I'm called a white supremacist. I'm not. I'm an American, and that's a big difference. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Kelly Schlacler. And again, that's one of the also reasons why you state your name, so you can get it correct for the record.
Good evening. I'm Kelly Schlacler, Anacortes. I can't even believe I'm standing up here. It's baloney. Why do we have to have a proclamation to honor our founding fathers, Americans, et cetera? We have holidays, we have Veterans Day, we have Memorial Day, we have Fourth of July. Why would we have to make a proclamation for that? But we can't make a proclamation to support Pride Month. There's something wrong with that. You're continuing to dehumanize and devalue people, and frankly, I'm tired of it. What are you all afraid of? Truly, what are you afraid of? Think about it. It's probably not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Karen Bolton, and everyone's doing great on time and getting their message across, so appreciate it. Sorry, Karen Bolton. And again, if you don't want to speak, you can just change your mind, that's fine. All right. Her last name is Cook, I think. I can read that part. Can you come on up?
Hi, I'm Amy Cook, and I live in Anacortes. On my maternal grandmother's side, I'm third-generation American, and I am very proud to be an American. And I think, I actually learned more of that going to university. I have met many students who are from other countries who come here just to learn. One of them, he told me his country is younger than his grandparents, and he was still able to come here to learn, and that way he can take knowledge that he can get from America and better his own country as he's going into construction engineering. I've also met several people who became American citizens from other countries, and they are some of the most proud Americans I have ever met, instead of the ones who were born here and take for granted everything that we have. I even have a friend in Britain whose house was broken into, and when he asked a police officer what he could do to protect himself, he was told that he could do nothing, and since he asked, it was premeditated. So if he had something like a baseball bat next to his bed to defend himself, he would be the one who would be in trouble when someone else broke into his house. And he's the one who told me, that he goes, "America is the last free place." And I honestly took so many of my American rights for granted until I've met people who'd never had them. And I would really like to be able to take a month where we can actually reflect on what makes America different and how we can improve the entire world as a whole. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, Richard Crable.
Yes, hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Yeah, I think, I don't think anybody's here to comment about whether we should be celebrating the United States. I mean, we do celebrate it as Americans, all of us live in America, we've all come from the roots from generations past in the U.S. I don't think anybody's here to say we were not patriotic, we shouldn't be celebrating the U.S. We all celebrate 12 federal holidays a year, we all get dressed up in red, white, and blue. We're all true patriots on both sides of whatever the political issue is. As I understand it, the concern is that there was a Pride Month proposal that was made, and in its place, it was deemed political, even though obviously people who are LGBTQ are neither, they're not a political party, right? They're left, right, center. They're just human beings, like all of us, right? It's not a political statement. We're a great country, and I'm proud to be an American. One of the things that makes us great is that we acknowledge mistakes that we've made, we've learned from them, and we grow together to make a more perfect union in the words of our founders, and that's what sustains us. It's not a document, it's the way that we have lived with that document and made it better and better over the years. And one of the things that differentiates us is that we acknowledge things we've done in the past, we learn from them, we understand that we kidnapped and enslaved people for generations, and we try to make amends for that, right? We understand that we criminalized an entire class of people, made them live in the darkness, in the shadows, in the closet because they were different from us, right? So I'm not asking you to honor me. I don't need a parade or a month. I don't need a Richard Crable Matters proclamation, you know? What I need is an understanding among all of us that we're trying to make a better and more perfect union, and the way to do that is acknowledge errors we've made in the past, stand up for people who have not been stood up for by the majority of the population. I'm a single white male American citizen. I, you know, won the lottery, so to speak, one might say, in terms of rights, right? But that's not good enough for me, right? You have to stand up for people who have been, their entire lives as human beings were criminalized for generations, right? So this is not about, we all stand for America, we're all Americans, and we all celebrate it every day, regardless of what side of the political spectrum you're on. My father's a Navy veteran, my grandfather was in the Navy. I mean, it's not a political issue, one side or the other, and this is not a political issue. These are human beings, right? So let's not pretend this is, well, we'll just make a statement about America, right? This isn't either or, or a both. Let's do both. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is Suzanne Roner.
My name is Suzanne Roner. I live in Anacortes, and in response to your comment, you can do both or all, this resolution does all. It includes every citizen in this room, every citizen in this country. It includes all of us. First, a housekeeping item, there's a typo in the agenda for today's meeting. The resolution is not "America Proud," the resolution is "American Proud." It's a small change in wording, but a significant change in meaning. "America Proud" focuses on America, the country. "American Proud" expands that focus to include every single person who is a citizen of America. What could possibly be more diverse or more inclusive than that? Our American citizenship is one of the few things we share in common. What is baffling is that there is any resistance at all to this resolution, which celebrates the most diverse assemblage of humans in history. There are those who state that American patriotism is just a covered for white supremacy. There are those who state this resolution is racist, sexist, anti-LGBTQ, and just plain hateful. And I ask, how can a resolution that includes every single citizen in this nation be any of these things? For the past several years, we have listened to the nonstop rhetoric that our country and our Constitution are fatally flawed by the sins of our past. We have watched as some fail to recognize or willfully disregard the fact that this country has used the power of its Constitution to right those wrongs, and we watch in disbelief as those who beat their drum the loudest insist that no amount of atonement or contrition will ever be enough. Our country is in serious trouble, each side insisting that our democracy must be saved. Of course, the most obvious flaw in any plan to save our democracy is the fact that there is no democracy to save. America is not a democracy. America is a constitutional republic. So what's the difference? James Madison said, quote, "Democracy is the most vile form of government," end quote. Democracy is majority rule. It's 50% plus one. Democracy has no moral code and can easily morph into mob rule, anarchy, and tyranny. A republic is liberty under law. It is the rule of law accompanied by a moral code and by virtue. We rarely hear anything about virtue these days, except in the context of virtue signaling. This is a derogatory term defined as the public expression of opinions or sentiments intended to demonstrate one's good character or social conscience, or the moral correctness of one's position on a particular issue. Virtue, on the other hand, is defined as behavior showing what someone, showing high moral standards. In the context of our Constitution, virtue is defined as doing the right thing. So I respectfully ask our mayor and city council members to do the virtuous thing, to do the right thing, and to approve this resolution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Almost made it in time. Next up is Connie Miller.
Thank you, Mayor Miller, no relation, city council members. I don't have any prepared comments. I just want to express how I feel as a citizen of Anacortes, and I do live in Anacortes, and that is, when I read through this in the packet, because I do come to city council meetings often, I just felt positive. I thought it was a unifying message. I thought it was a message that applied to everyone, and it would be a really great thing to celebrate. I feel badly that people have felt that it was exclusionary. I feel badly that people have felt that it was exclusionary in some way, because I do not think that was the intention at all. I think that being American citizens, and being happy about that, and celebrating that is one unifying thing, no matter where we are politically, religiously, culturally, in any other way. So I would request that the council strongly consider passing this resolution. It's in line with what the city already does in promoting the celebration of the founding of our country. One of my favorite things is posing in that picture every year on the Fourth of July. And I love that we do it, not on Christmas, not on Thanksgiving, not on New Year's Day, but on Independence Day, when we all come together and everyone can be in that picture. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Teresa, I think it's Carol Gillis, maybe? You can help me out when you get up here.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to let you know what my thoughts were. When I heard about this today, I was a little concerned, mainly because I supported this country for 45 years in military service, just retired two years ago. And every single day, every single week, every single month, every single year, I've been a proud American. I think we all are. I didn't really understand why we need a proclamation to say we're all proud Americans, when we all have every day to be proud Americans. We have holidays that we're proud Americans. And God bless you all, we have holidays that even celebrate the military and everyone else's sacrifice to this wonderful country. So I'm just kind of confused why I need a month to say I'm a proud American, when we should be able to get together without that month, and be proud Americans, and support one another, and support diversity and different ideas. And I guess it is also addition to the fact that we couldn't seem to support diversity, as in June being the Pride Month for Anacortes. So I'm just kind of concerned why we're reluctant to pass any kind of special proclamation for diversity, but we want to do a whole month, when we have every single day, every single week, every single month and year, to celebrate our proud, being a proud American. I don't need a month to tell everybody I'm proud that I was privileged enough to live in this free country, and let me tell you what, I've been in more countries, and I can tell you probably more countries I haven't been in, and I've seen how privileged we are here. And I, of course, I'm very proud, but I also see that we're very privileged. And I don't need a month to tell everybody how privileged I am. Thank you, and I disagree with this.
Thank you very much. And I know council probably wants me to correct the record, that last year, I think in May, the council did pass a resolution for June to be LGBTQ plus Pride Month in Anacortes. Kalen Carroll Gillis. Okay, you're good? Okay, agree with previous caller, maybe? All right, working our way through the list.
I see the time, I will be brief. My name is Mary Gray, I live in Anacortes. Thank you for allowing me to be here today, it's a lovely group of people. And I really wish to thank all of you for your service, council members, mayor, the work you do to lead this community is wonderful and much appreciated. I am opposed to this resolution in its current form. And I will be brief, I spent not an exhaustive amount of time, but I spent approximately two hours researching the origin of it, the idea. I read it, I looked at the title, I looked up the title, I Googled it, I looked at several news sources, from a variety of perspectives. And I came up with two ideas from the internet that concern me. The title comes from two hate groups. The title of your resolution, one of which is the Proud Boys. That is not Anacortes, that is not our community. The words of your resolution are wonderful, supporting law enforcement, keeping us safe, firefighters, our institutions of government, that's all wonderful. But that title is about hate. Please do due diligence and look into it before you take any further action. I think you need to press the pause button on this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think the last name is Waters. Corinne, maybe? Oh, yeah, we do not, also, we don't allow signs. So it's a good, it's a good, it's a good try, but again, it's, again, everybody's being very respectful, I appreciate it, and I appreciate everybody sticking on time. I think we're not going to be able to hear from all 18,880 residents of Anacortes, but we're hearing you. So Waters, I think? Okay. And again, state your name for the record, and where you live, please.
Kim Waters, Anacortes resident, small business owner, serving the community of Anacortes. Correct me if I'm wrong, regarding the passing last year of the proclamation, was it ever signed by the mayor?
The proclamation was signed, yes.
By you?
It was, I was out of town, the mayor pro tem signed it.
The mayor pro tem signed it, so you didn't sign it.
I would have signed it.
I'm here opposing this proclamation, nothing is preventing our children from being taught the history of America. Nothing is preventing us every single day from being proud to be Americans. It is an issue, the way this town, the way things were handled with the LGBT Pride Month. And I do oppose this.
Thank you. Amia McDaniel.
Hi, my name is Amuia McDaniel, I'm from Anacortes. So if it's all right, I have a short statement on behalf of my husband, who cannot be here, he's with my toddler.
Okay.
There has been a request to proclaim support of the LGBTQ plus community, and in turn, it has been denied for a Pride Month celebration. The dog whistle is not quiet, and the whistler is not unseen. Today will either be a mark of shame, or a statement of character. Thank you for your consideration from him. As for me, I like to assume this motion is in good faith, but it's not what about is being said and done now, it is what was not said, and what was left undone. I understand being proud, and I am proud of our country, but a town that cannot be proud and celebrate all of its community members, of all colors, religions, national origin, or citizenship, and personal identity, has nothing to be proud of. The U.S. is special. 68 countries around the world have legislation against gay rights, 11 of which impose the death penalty. Here it is liberty and justice for all. That is not political. I heard a few people talk about World War II, and pride in our military, and our country, yet, a few decades after World War II, my Jewish grandmother was, who worked for NASA, was taken and interrogated during the McCarthy trials. This is why we need to continue to fight for equality, and understand that our actions, what we say and what we don't say, matter. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next, please, no applause, Sid Blase, I'm sorry. No, I messed that one up.
Hi, my name is Sid Blasey.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm from Anacortes. Good evening, mayor, city council members. I live in Anacortes, and I'm a board member of Anacortes Pride. Just a week ago, we had 2,000 people come out in support of the parade and the celebration for Pride. They stood with us, and they said they believe in inclusivity. For two years, we have been looking for a show of support from the mayor's office. We had a resolution from the city council, thank you for that. We have not received the support, though, from the mayor. I'm glad you said you would have signed it. But you have refused to bring a Pride proclamation before the city council to vote on this year. You said it was too political. There have never been any proclamations at all, nothing for the LGBTQIA+ community, nothing for Black History Month, and our African-American families, nothing for the Indian nations, nothing for Asian-American Month, nothing. And yet, we are to believe that this proclamation is not political. It was brought forth at the request of Judy Billings, the chair of the Skagit County Republican Party, and the chair of the Candidate Support Committee. This seems awfully political to me. I do believe you know her political bias. While on the surface, this proclamation looks harmless, it is not. If anyone researches for a second, they will find that the far-right, who despise the woke community, is out to appropriate the ethical and progressive values of our community. The idea for an America Proud Day comes from the folks at American Pride. This is so obvious, it's almost silly, but it's not silly, it's aggressive and mean-spirited. This is another knife into the inclusive fabric of what makes America great. Book banning, attacks on reproductive rights, attacks on trans rights, continual undermining of the right to vote. All of this rolls around in the same barrel of fear and aggression from the organization that came up with this proclamation. The proclamation says, as the mayor read, that we support, the support and dedication of what American Proud represents, but there is no clarification of what this represents. This is too vague and unnerving of a loose meaning. I do not know the intention of this proclamation, we have not been given that information. The LGBTQIA+ community has served in the military, the police, and fire departments. This proclamation is not meant to honor them. It is something against Pride Month, and for our, and against our community. My father was a veteran, I cried as they played the taps at his funeral, I want him honored. I have Veterans Day, I don't need this proclamation to help me honor him. We haven't even finished putting away our decorations from the Pride Parade last week, and already, we are being belittled by the title and intention of this proclamation. There are many people here who agree with me, who will not speak, I would like you to stand up, because I know you're afraid to speak in front of the crowd. The city council members, please vote against this thinly veiled hate vote. Anacortes mayor's office, either do proclamations, bring them for a vote to city council, or don't do them. This proclamation is not the place to start. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And next up, please, let's have order. Thank you.
Barbara Smart, I live here in Anacortes since 2012. I really enjoy Anacortes, it's a very open and active community. When I came from overseas, and also from other places in the states, there was the library, there is the theater, there were so many things, and then, I'm involved with the senior center, so many things to keep everybody active. But to me, I'm also very proud to be an American. But a lot of people have forgotten how important it is to say, "I am an American," where I can be anything, I can be gay, I can be a Republican, I can be a Democrat. And this is just trying to say, to remind people, and also to spread, a lot of people have forgotten how important it is to be an American. You go to Canada, and they are having more and more strict rules on what they can say, what they're, if they can have weapons, if they can have post-things on the internet. And here we are in America, we can do all of these kind of things. If you go overseas, in England, they have very restrictive things, you go, hey, look at Russia, you know, tells you right there. But Anacortes, I just want people to think, why are we here? It just says, "Proud to be an American." What is wrong with being proud of America? Then it's up to you to tell your children and your neighbors how proud you are, and why you value to live in this country. Because we are one of the best, we can be anything we want here, and we can become from a poor person to a rich person, and in-between. But the only way we can do that is because we are American, and you need to make sure people realize how special this country is. I've visited 20 different countries around the world, working with the government, and we really are a special organization. And one more thing, would all the people who support the America Proud, please stand up? Okay? Thank you very much.
Please, no applause, come on. Thank you. Maggie Collins. Going to waive your opportunity, because I'm only going with written, people who have signed up, because we do have additional work to do on council. Okay, Maggie Collins, no. And you notice, we don't start the timer until you get up and start talking.
Good evening, thank you so much, council members, for your service, and Mr. Mayor, it must be a ton of your time, and I really value local government. I agree with other things that were said, and I just ask that you vote against this resolution. I think there are a lot of good ideas and things I'm supportive of in the resolution, and I think that we should not be supportive of a title, even if it's misconstrued, if it makes other people feel bad. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Lee, and I'm from Anacortes. Hi, friends and neighbors. So American Proud is a special opportunity to bring people together. We don't even know where all this separation came from. It's not about LGBTQ against anybody. We are Anacortes, we are Americans. Everybody that stood up at the beginning of this, and said, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America," that's all of us. We're just wanting it to be beyond one day. You know, let's make it a whole month, let's not make it about what happened in June, what happens afterwards. This is just about July, and having it be American Proud. Also, just wanted to let you know that we are proud here in Anacortes. So you might could tell from my accent, not originally from Anacortes, I'm from Tennessee. But when we moved here, super happy to be in Anacortes, it's beautiful, there's like no place else on it on earth. And we just want to welcome everybody to be proud, to be Americans, that's all. And my daughter, Katie Lee, is going to take the rest of my time.
Hi, my name is Katie Lee, I'm a 14-year-old girl from Anacortes. I am nonpartisan, and I've never heard of politics and not rolled my eyes. But I thought I would say something, even though politics really have nothing to do with being an American. I grew up around military kids who never had a parent around, because they were always out protecting our citizenship, but they were always happy about it, and wanted to be like mom, or dad, or whoever. I've had grandparents on my adopted parents' side who have fought for us, and even both of my birth parents have been in the military. I think that every American citizen should be proud of what we have and what we are given, and not just blow it off, because we have a couple holidays sprinkled in. It shocks me about how many people, and adults, that don't understand our history, and acknowledge it because it goes against what they think, or what they say. And it's only just like one or two people. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Maureen Brennan. I think it's Maureen.
Hi, my name is Maureen Brennan, I'm from Anacortes. And I am here to oppose this resolution. It defies logic. Every day, we celebrate America. I see in Anacortes flags flying every single day. We have holidays, we have the Fourth of July, we have Memorial Day, we have all the holidays that celebrate all the different groups of people that provide... We have all the holidays that celebrate all the different groups of people that provide for our country. Injustice to one is injustice to all. I feel very slighted when people are saying, "This is a wonderful land, this is, we celebrate everyone's diversity." No, we don't. As a person of minority, I am not celebrated. I don't feel the pride, I don't feel the loving arms at all times. I have my communities where I get that, but I do not get that everywhere. In Anacortes, in every city in the U.S., we have people that live in fear. If you believe this country is so wonderful, you hang your flag with pride, do you have fear of hanging that flag? As an LGBTQ person, I think twice about putting a diversity sign out in my yard. I do not feel safe. So please, do not say, "We are wonderful, we embrace everyone," because we do not. And I challenge, if you want to celebrate the greatness of America, change the title of Proud American, and instead make it a verb, and celebrate who we all are, and it'll only be when we all feel it. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Anastasia, sorry I always mispronounce your last name, Brendick.
Hi. I'm Anastasia Brendick from Anacortes, and I just want to say, I love that we're all here, and I'm noticing that we're having a conversation like this, and not here. And I'm really appreciating that, because yeah, we're all Americans, and I want to say, if we want to do that, let's make it, this resolution work for all of us. I want to support us in including the diverse cultures that are encompassed in saying we're American. It's not one culture, we're not homogeneous. So that means we got to listen more to our lived experience of our neighbors. And it's going to be a different lived experience than what you have, and the same with me. I mean, I'm a military kid, my dad was a lieutenant colonel, served in Vietnam, we went to Germany and all over the place. So I understand military, I understand that world, and there's more than that that encompasses America. There are people like firefighters and police officers that need to be celebrated, but remember that police officers aren't seen as safe for everyone. So include the lived experience of everyone, so that everyone can be at the table and enjoy this resolution. So most of the things that I wanted to say have already been said, but I just wanted to say that, looking at this, it says, "The support and dedication of what America Proud Month represents." And that's the part that I don't know what that means. What's the definition of what America or American Proud Month represents? If we can decide what that is, maybe we could all agree together about that. The last part is, oh gosh, I think everything was said. Well, anyway, yes, and so I appreciate, thank you so much for the time that you put in. You do not get paid enough, because I see what you get paid every month, it is not a lot. And thank you so much, everyone, for being here and loving our community enough to want to move us into the future together. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, I've got Ed Capasso.
Ed Capasso from Anacortes. I come before the council today as a Navy Vietnam veteran who served our nation, and I recognize and honor so many others who served both before and after me, as well as those men and women who serve today yet on active duty. How we gained all of these rights is because of us who put on the uniform, who fought on the front lines, who took the chance that we may not come back home, but we were willing to do that for everyone in this room and in this community. Many of our veterans even made the ultimate sacrifice, and many others who returned home were both physically and/or emotionally scarred. All of us upon enlistment raised our right hand, and swore an oath very similar to this. I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, both foreign and domestic, that I will hear true faith and allegiance to the same. This was just a portion of that oath, but we all swore to obey it on any and all circumstances and all costs. That I will bear false, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same. That means that everyone, with no exceptions, is who we fought for and served for. It didn't matter what color you were, what race you were, what nationality, what religion, you were all Americans, and we were proud and honored to fight for you and serve and try to save you, as well as our families. But we were willing to put our lives on the line to do that. Many veterans today live in our community, like myself, and I want to remind the council and all in this audience, the sign coming into Anacortes says, "Anacortes, the All-America City." So let's keep it like that. And I say, let's honor all of us veterans, and let's give this month to these veterans, and myself. American Proud is who we are when we put on that uniform, and we still are today. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, no applause, we're almost there, we've almost made it. Mike Johnick. And again, you can concur. All right. Or you've already heard your piece, I would think. Sally Ballmer. Oh, sorry, Mike? Were you, you signed up to speak? Mike? Okay. All right. And then Sally Ballmer.
Sally Ballmer, Anacortes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and people here. Most of what I've thought of saying has already been said. I simply want to say that indeed, the name does trouble me, because I did go to the website, and there is something called, you know, American Pride Month, and it's, you know, wants ambassadors and businesses and other groups to sign up, and what they want to do is take on, quote, "the woke corporations," whatever that means. So there's a lot that feels kind of vague to me, because I don't want to be asleep, I want to hear everybody's story, I want to work that in. And, you know, I grew up putting up the flag when my folks would go away, and this place, we'd put up the flag, and then I remember one day, hearing someone say, gee, it's too bad. Now it seems like the flag, it's like it means some things to some people, but it doesn't get to mean certain things to other people. So my concern with this is that it won't bring people together. Because patriotism, to me, is about working to make life better for everybody, and hearing all the different stories, and taking them seriously. And sometimes I've noticed some stories get favored more than others, or presumptions, well, they're just, that's their cause. But, you know, there's all kinds of veterans, my father was a military veteran, but many of these people who lived and died in the Civil Rights were veterans, you know? And there's all kinds of people who are out to make America better, that, you know, help bring us together. So my considerations, hopefully adding to the pot. Thank you for your work.
All right, well, thank you very much. I just want to comment, you know what, okay, you can all let it all out and applaud for free speech now, at this point, if you want to. Okay. So I would just like to say, it's been great hearing from all of you, and thank you so much for being respectful, and like I said, that was a wonderful celebration of free speech. I will turn it over to the council, if they're interested in making a motion, or whatever council's pleasure.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Young.
What I want to say comes from the heart, as always, for those of you that know me, you know, I speak from the heart, and I do as much due diligence and homework to just make sure everyone is at the table. That's what matters to me most. Even if we may disagree on approach, the thing that I want to make sure all of you is heard, and for me, that's important. But just my personal history, I am, you know, my father served in the military, my brothers served in the military, my family's served in the military, and, you know, in case you didn't notice, I'm African-American, a person of color. So I lived through segregation, I lived through integration, and have diverse friends. My spouse is German-Irish, we've been together 30 years. He served in the military, he served as a general surgeon in operating. All of our family works hard because we believe in this country, and that's the thing that we represent. Our country is not perfect, yes, but we've got an extraordinary country and a wonderful group of people. So when I look out and hear the views, it just really still warms my heart, because I believe what we're each fighting for is one of the same things, and that is our country. I happen to come from a place where trying to make sure people who have traditionally not been heard are heard, and that somehow, in between all of that, we find a way to work together, because the common thread that we have is that we are Americans. And so I celebrate that in everything that I do. And so, you know, I think, for me personally, and I appreciate the language of many of the people that spoke in support of this document, but, and I really appreciate the language, because what it was trying to show, but it's not associated with anything other than all of us as an Americans, diverse groups of people, cultures, thoughts, ideas, religions, agnostic, any of that stuff, I get that. The challenge that I have is that in doing the research, and the things that have been coming to me, there are groups that have taken on this issue as a divisive issue, to say, "Why not? This is what we stand for, that we don't want a woke society," whatever that means, "we don't want LGBTQIA+ people in place we don't want." And so they tend to try to limit what an American is, and it's not true, we're all Americans. So I struggled a little bit with that, and then I tried to look at the, just how the intent. And so, you know, I just feel like, personally, right now, that we have a beautiful city, and we have some beautiful people, we extraordinarily safe. I think one friend said, he's never been to a city that waves the American flag and has it out in the public more than we do. And all I'm saying is, LGBTQ plus I+ people serve in the military, as we've seen, we love America, too. At our house, we have both flags, and that's important. But my concern is the association with other groups in this national movement that seems to be taking place. And so, anyway, that's just my opinion, but I appreciate every single thing I've heard from each of you. I've been writing notes, and it really does give me pause. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on council? And I can have a quick moment to see if there's going to be a motion?
Mayor Miller.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hubig.
Thank you. This resolution came through when I was traveling and spending some time out in Washington's D.C. and in the Maryland State House. And Maryland State House, in case anybody doesn't know, it's the oldest standing structure with an active legislature. And inside it is George Washington's handwriting, behind like 12 inches of plexiglass. And after seeing that, and coming home and reading this, and just kind of reflecting on what it means to get to live here, and as a woman, I drove here. Not every woman in every country can drive. I have on pants today, my face is not covered, my hair is not covered. I am an elected official, speaking in front of people, including other men in the audience. And there are very, very special things that I do believe, as some people have said, that we take for granted. And then over the weekend, as emails started coming in, I saw one phrase that I wasn't really familiar with, somebody mentioned "American exceptionalism." And I did my research, and I looked into it, and there's a lot of stuff in there that I feel that I really like. I like the tenet of egalitarianism. It's supposed to be one of the tenants of American exceptionalism. And I feel that that is something that we have struggled with, because as Councilmember Young mentioned, and has been mentioned in public comment, we have bought and sold and traded people here. Up until 1974, women could not open bank accounts or have credit cards without having a man as a co-signer. There have been a lot of things that we have overcome through things that we've done as individuals, things that we've done as community members and elected officials. And there is a lot to be very proud of, but for me, this seems a little bit, if he's the only word that I have for it, I don't have anything more politically biased or scientific with it, there's just, there's something that doesn't quite feel right. I love seeing all of these people here, thank you so much for taking time out of your night, we've been here for almost two hours now. I feel like this is you serving your civic duty as an American, as the mayor mentioned earlier, freedom of speech and how important this is. So thank you for showing up. One of the things that I would like to see come out of this is maybe looking forward and actually recognizing kind of what we've done as a country, maybe putting some phrasing in here to recognize what we have overcome. Because some of the phrasing that's in there now, let me pull it up. We have a unique brand of American freedom that doesn't exist anywhere in the world, and it must be celebrated and remembered. People have commented that they're concerned about what this could represent. Maybe it can represent all of these things that we have overcome, all of the work that we need to do, not necessarily like a strategic plan, I know we're council, we've been talking about strategic plans a lot, but like has been said here from multiple people, recognizing what we've done and what we still need to do.
Okay. Any other members of council want to speak? Mr. McDougall.
Mayor Miller. Actually, thank you, Ms. Hubig, for bringing up the concept of American exceptionalism. This conversation has had me thinking about culture, and about culture as an ecosystem, an ecosystem of basically ideas and concepts and memes. And American exceptionalism is a very powerful meme within our culture, and one that you find is very institutionalized within our culture. I mean, we said the pledge at the beginning of this meeting, we sing the National Anthem at the beginning of sporting events, we have national holidays, we have all of these aspects that are very institutionalized, part of American exceptionalism, part of this sort of narrative that we tell about ourselves, certainly within like an ecosystem where there are numerous narratives that we tell about ourselves, but that one's a really big one. And it's big enough that I don't think I need to support this resolution to add any more to it, I think it's already well represented.
Thanks. I'm guessing every member of council wants to comment, or I'll make sure if they don't. Mr. Walters?
Thank you. To think I spent so many hours on that parking ordinance.
I won't tell you how much time I spent on this one.
Well, I am certainly very happy to promote patriot- Well, I am certainly very happy to promote patriotism and patriotic celebrations, Fourth of July, maybe even the whole month of July. And if you told me that we were writing a resolution celebrating patriotism and celebrating the fact of the United States, then I would not be opposed to it. I think I would want to help write it, though. We, we do already have President's Day and Flag Day and Memorial Day and Veterans Day. We also have Martin Luther King Junior Day. And we have Juneteenth now. And all of those are celebrations of the progress that we've made as a country. So it's not just the Fourth of July. And it's not just Memorial Day and Veterans Day because patriotism is not synonymous with military service. There are many people who serve our country and our community in a variety of different ways. And I'm glad the resolution mentions our police and fire departments. I'm glad that it mentions our military. But us up here on council are also serving our community. People in the clandestine services are serving our community, not part of the military. People in the federal government and the state government and the other levels of local government are all serving our community. And then almost every one of you, because you all came out here to speak about what our community should be doing tonight. However, we are faced with the text that is in front of us. And people have said this resolution is to show respect to our founding fathers. It doesn't mention the founding fathers. People have said it, it says, you know, we're proud to be an American, but it doesn't actually say that. The text is sort of circular. We celebrate American Proud Month because of what America Proud Month represents. It, it does say that our great American history was built on liberty and freedom for all. And as we, we all know, that's, that's actually not true. The state that America started in is not what we should celebrate. What we should celebrate is the progress that we've made. Now, no one else seems to have adopted America Proud Month. I got the emails. I got on the Google and the Bing by local. And, and I didn't find America Proud Month. And that's fine. We could invent the wheel. But people immediately via email on Wednesday associated Proud Month with Proud Boys, probably because of the notoriety right now because of January 6, 2021. So I don't, I don't see us as a council or a community adopting anything with the word "proud" in the title. Now, the alternative title, America Pride Month, is, I guess, a little better. However, it's associated with a right-wing organization that has a lot to say about a lot of different things, and I don't think we want to be associated with that. It also seems to poke at LGBTQ Pride Month. And I'm not in favor of poking at that. We did pass a resolution adopting Pride Month for June. So there's some grammatical changes. There are some factual errors, but as a general matter, we could go back and rewrite it and we could adopt a resolution celebrating July as something else, something focused on the patriotic founding of our country and the progress that we've made since that time. However, we're not meeting next week. So is that something that we need to do? I, I don't, I don't know. I do know that we need to get the parking ordinance done. And we, we will need to talk about that several more times before we do it. I just want to say I believe in this country. I think all of us in public service, what, no matter what flavor that is, believe in this country, or we wouldn't be up here. The people of this community I also believe in. Sometimes it's two steps forward and then one step back, but in the main, in general, we make the right choices to move us forward. But there is no higher calling in public service than to making sure all the members of our community, especially in local government, public service, making sure that all the members of our community feel heard and feel part of that community. And so when I hear people say that they don't feel celebrated or embraced, I hear that. And we should all hear that. It was only a couple of weeks ago that a good friend of mine was called the N-word in his front yard here in Anacortes. And then we hear that there's quite a bit more of that than just that isolated incident happening in the schools. So those are things we really need to work on. And if we can do that by celebrating the connections that make us all Americans, that's great. I don't think the text of this resolution gets us there. But maybe that is something that we ought to take on and figure out a more effective way of doing.
Two more council members? Anybody? You don't? Okay. Christine, Councilmember Christine, Cleveland McGrath.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for coming. The fact that you are here for two hours is admirable. I think a lot of you folks were called in in the last minute, and so I appreciate your willingness to come and be here and speak your mind. That's, I think, what we appreciate about our, our freedom and our country, right? Is that we're able to be here and do this. I also want to thank the other council members. You guys, every single one of you have set, made incredible points and, and brought your own perspective. When this came in front of me, it was, it was a challenge to read it because of some of the associations, first of all, the title, which we've heard. And then going through it, I, I kind of said, I started to reflect that, yes, all of these organizations and groups and service members are incredibly important to our community and to the country and our freedom. But I also got a sense that there, it was associated with other things that, that are problematic. And I think we need to be very careful not to co-opt pride, American pride and service, whether it's military service or public service. And, and so that got me thinking is, and I don't want to repeat what other people have said, so I'm kind of jumping around here. You know, if, if the desire is to acknowledge and to educate our, and to thank and to hold up our community members that have served us so well, then I think that means we should look at not necessarily July being America Proud Month because it, there are some problematic groups that have co-opted those words to, to be divisive. But it is going back, you know, and saying National Military Appreciation Month is May. You know, John McCain was the one who created or passed that in 1999. And during that month, you've got Spouse Day, which is the Friday prior to Mother's Day. It started in 1984. You have Loyalty Day, which is May 1st to set aside the reaffirmation of loyalty to the United States and the recognition of heritage of American freedom. You have Armed Forces Day and Week. And you have Memorial Day. So to me, if we want to acknowledge the military and the service of not only our military members, but the families that have supported those military members, then let's talk about doing that for the month of May. And that's something that is, has already been adopted, that is consistent through our country and, and seems to have a, at least for me, a better sense of feeling and purpose. And then also, not only do you just put a resolution in and you sign it off, I mean, I think then there has to be some level of responsibility to educate our next generation, right? I mean, when we do Veterans Day, which is in November, I've brought my kids to the veterans' presentation, which is incredible at the transit shed. The port does a beautiful job. The music's incredible. The speakers are incredible. It's a very moving ceremony. And I think that we do a lot of good things like that. And then we can talk about, you know, the, the other folks that are included are firefighters and, and police. I mean, we have Police Week. And it was, it's in the middle of May. I think you've passed Police Appreciation Week in 2022. There's Firefighter Appreciation Day on May 4th. There's also the Week of in October. I think there's opportunities for us to acknowledge the, the, the different groups that are in this resolution, but I feel that the current resolution in front of us has too many negative associations for me to feel comfortable moving forward, forward with it as is.
I'm just going to have to disagree with one point on the Veterans Day speakers. I was one of the speakers and they weren't all that great. All right. Ms. Moulton.
Thank you, Mayor Miller. And thank you to everyone who's here tonight. I've read this, read this resolution over and over again. I've followed to the links that I find problematic that have been discussed. I appreciate council's readings. I appreciate the perspective that people have brought, particularly the ones who have interpreted this in a very generous way. And that feeling behind it, I feel, is completely genuine and I have a lot of respect for that. And I am a patriot as well. I feel like the timing of this was unfortunate as June is Pride Month, as we just had a fabulous parade with at least 2,000 people of joy and inclusion and everyone comfortable to be who we are, no matter who we are. So I feel like this landed with a thud for me as the timing as well. And I voted and council voted unanimously for our inclusion resolution, which was in 2019. And to me, that is more celebratory of, of all of us. And the reason I think that this landed hard also and not easily with me is that it's almost, it's just, I just don't feel, even though I appreciate that people here do and I respect that, I don't feel that inclusion. I don't feel that it encompasses all of us and, and I am not in support of it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, council. Appreciate all those words and again, appreciate all the words of you all that came out here tonight. I think, I, I think I know my Roberts rules well enough that I'm not going to get a motion. So, but I will, I will wait a few seconds to see if I get a motion. And if not, the resolution, we will move on to our next item of business. That's how it works unless somebody's going to make a motion. Okay. We're on to item 6C, which is inter-local agreement 23189DEF001 with Skagit County for public defender writings rotation. Ms. Shu. And I don't know how long your presentation is, but...
Short.
Okay. So...
Mayor, council and members of the audience, this will be a very short presentation. In this, this year, we hired a public defender following the retirement of a former public defender. And we're putting some processes in place that are favorable to the, the office for the efficient use of, of time. We've been working to try and get this contract or inter-local agreement from Skagit County for almost two months. And it arrived on Thursday after we'd had an opportunity to already set the agenda. This is something that typically would just have been on the consent agenda, but because we're going to make an, an update to the agenda today, I did ask that we move it forward since our next meeting is not until July 10th. What this inter-local agreement does is it allows us to have a process so that our public defender does not have to go every day, Monday through Friday, to the jail to ensure that people that are from Anacortes have an opportunity to understand what their rights are following their arrest. It allows for a rotation of other attorneys to, to share in those duties. It makes for more efficient time. So this will include a rotation where Crystal Chapel, our public defender, will have certain days that she is assigned between now and the end of the year to be able to, to go and represent all the clients that are, that may be in the jail. And then that people will also represent, other attorneys will represent Anacortes on days that she's not assigned. So what I'm trying to do is just get this inter-local approved by the, the city council tonight so that we can then move forward with the, the signature process. There are quite a few entities that need to sign this so that we can make better, better use of Ms. Chapel's time so that she's not at the, the jail Monday through Friday.
And, and what Ms. Shu left out of that is Ms. Chapel is really, is doing great and these are, this is one of the efficiencies that she has, she has brought to the, as our new, relatively new public defender. So anyway, thank you. And any questions for Ms. Shu? Mr. Walters?
So we did just get this today, so I haven't had a lot of time with it, but it is a little odd in that it's an inter-local agreement with a private party, that being Mountain Law. Maybe that's not fatal to it, but just note that. Because there is a private party, there's nothing about insurance in here. Has this been reviewed by our city attorney?
Yes. Ms. Swetnam reviewed the, the contract, the inter-local when it was presented on Thursday. This is a practice that, that is customary with all of the public defenders. The, the city of Mount Vernon and Burlington do use Mountain Law for their indigent defense. And yes, there is a understanding that, that without this, we would not have the legal indemnification that we, and so they're not willing to have, let anybody, you know, sit in on the, on the Anacortes cases until this is in, in place.
And we also might not simply have the capacity to do the work that we need to do without this, I'd imagine.
Exactly.
I think that I'm okay with it. I imagine, though, that there might also be other efficiencies that we could gain going beyond this particular agreement because all three of the other cities are represented by the same firm for public defense. But we can explore that later.
Any other questions for Ms. Shu? Okay. With no questions, I might be looking for a motion.
Mayor Miller.
Mr. Walters?
I move to approve the inter-local as presented.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Walters, a second by Mr. Young to authorize me to execute the inter-local cooperative agreement between the city of Anacortes and Skagit County. Mr. Hoagland, any additional discussion? Mr. Hoagland, would you take the vote, please?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath?
Yes.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Ms. Hubig?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Being no further business before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming.